Well, good evening, everyone. Se go ani buju endio wachea kuekuei. As the mayor of the city of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honor and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors, who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. So, we were just meeting in committee, the whole closed meeting. We did discuss several items. One was with respect to an update on Ontario Land Tribunal appeals. We discussed property acquisition and collective bargaining. So, I will ask for a motion to waive our procedural rules and have the clerk report, please.
Moved by councillor Shave, seconded by councillor Ridge. The council rise from the committee of the whole closed meeting that the rules of bylaw 202141 be waived and the city clerk report.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried.
Moved by councillor Shave, seconded by councillor Ridge. The council approved the purchase of 309 Queen Mary Road, Kingston, legally described in Exhibit B of Report 23038 for $3,800,000. Direct the Director of Business, Real Estate and Environment to execute any documents requisite to the waiver fulfillment of conditions contained in the Agreement of Purchase and Sale between Extended Care, Kingston Corporation of the City of Kingston in a form satisfactory to the Director of Legal Services and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the necessary legal documents to effect the purchase of 309 Queen Mary Road, Kingston.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, we have approved our addits this evening. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. We have no presentations this evening. We do have one delegation at this point. I'll invite William Henderson and Chris Ackerman to appear before council to speak to Clause 3 of Report Number 6 from the CAO with respect to Kingston Public Market 2024 Gentlemen, please, you can come up to the podium. And just a reminder that you have up to five minutes, and then we will open up the floor to questions from council.
Okay, my name is Chris Ackerman. My family's been on this market for 60 years. I'm third generation. I grew up on the market since I was, well, I've been there since I've been five. Kind of in shock about this whole thing that being proposed to put, you know, make the market smaller, put seats all around the market so that, well, pretty much we have no room. This, as well as, well, this is my only source of income. I'm sure there's many others on here the same way. I'm kind of in disbelief that this is even proposed, but it is the way it is. So, as a longtime vendor, I've been on several, I don't know if you want to call them committees or meetings, whatever with the city, over bylaw changes. The last changes that were made before the pandemic, we had the people wanting to film, so we had sort of a, something set in stone that they were only to be three days and it was never to be a Saturday. Anyway, all these things kind of got put by the wayside when Loving Spoonfuls took over. So, we had October 14th, we were supposed to not be on the market in, for, what was it, wine and cheese they were going to have? And then, anyway, we ended up being on the market, but this kind of upsets our, our way of making a living, so I don't know, I don't understand it, I really don't. So, anyway, if, if, if this carries on and they put the seats on the market and we're down to smaller, I don't know, I don't, I don't see a way of keeping on, actually.
So, you have two minutes and 30 seconds left on your time.
Hi, I'm William Henderson, and I'm a third-generation farmer that's been on the Kingston Farmer's Market. And my concern with implementing the bylaws for 2024 versus 2006 is that there's a clause in there that says that the market can be removed for city special events. The clause, it was in 2006, sorry, 2006, stated that it was a civic event only that we could be removed for. In order to provide the services that we provide for the citizens of Kingston, that needs to go in under that rule. If it doesn't, then there's going to be a fair number of us that just can't afford to take the chance of the market being shut down. Saturdays are vital for us, and I believe the citizens of Kingston have spoken in terms of what they feel is necessary for the market. Leave it at that.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Okay, seeing none, thank you both very much. Okay, oh, I'm sorry, if you could just come back, councillor Osterhoff has a question on the screen. Councillor Osterhoff, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Patterson. Can you hear me? Jeez, yeah. Okay, yeah, so I'm a little bit caught off-guard here. I just want to ask you guys a couple of questions, because I don't, I don't know, and I don't think council knows, that there's a risk to the market, to its existence. And obviously, I can feel your heavy hearts, and ours as well. And have you, have you been, had enough dialogue? What would you like to see happen? I understand some of the requirements for closed times, but are you, are you willing to continue the engagement as stakeholders and bring your points across thoroughly yet and give this another solid look? Because council has not made a decision, or staff, I don't believe so.
So, maybe we'll leave that at the question. Go ahead.
Okay, so, my concern is with the 2024 operations that have been listed by staff. And the reason that I have this concern is, in 2006, we were working with leases instead of contracts for our space on the market. There's a huge difference between a lease and a contract in the legal sense, and those leases protected us. Now, you ask, would I be willing to come if the bylaw was left the way it is? It's a question mark that I'd have to really think about. The concern is that under the present bylaw, it states that it can be for any city special event. That includes a ball hockey fundraising tournament, which has been tried by the city and was turned down because we had a lease and because we threatened to go to court. It includes things like filming. We've worked with the committee that the city set up to bring in movies to the city. We've worked with them, and they've know that we want Saturdays kept prior, out of that particular sequence. And we worked with them and got that to be a working agreement. So, we're not saying outright, flat-out, that we're not going to come to the market at all. It's that we want to be heard, and we need to be in the discussion as to how things are going to change. And that hasn't happened as yet. And I can go back to 2006 and bring it forward to 2012, and in 2012, we spent six months trying to work out an agreement with the city around how to get things done. At the end of that, nothing happened. So, I don't know if I've answered your question fully or not, but...
Okay, thank you. Councillor Osterhoff?
Yeah, thank you for answering that. So, I want to make sure I heard you, so you're saying that you are willing to continue voicing your positions as part of a stakeholder group, and we can continue the engagement?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear that.
I want to know if I, that's what I've heard correctly from you, that you will, you will continue your involvement and your discussions with the city and allow us to look at this thoroughly.
Given the opportunity to do that, and given the opportunity that there is some sort of binding commitment from the city on the suggestions that we put forward, yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Patterson.
Councillor Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, through you. Thanks for speaking to us tonight. It sounds to me like we're hearing a lot of sort of confusion and misinformation with the vendors, and so my question is, do the vendors have any kind of organization where there's a point person who's in contact with the city?
We have a market vending association that has worked with the city in 2012. That association worked with the city for, as I say, four to six months, and there was no positive results from it. That association isn't as strong now as it was in 2012, but it can be very strong very quickly if it needs to be. And yes, we would be willing to speak to this.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to suggest that organizing together so that all the information is shared accurately, I think, would be a really important step forward for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Sannick?
Thank you, Your Worship, through you. Just two questions. When is, for the number of days where, like, the market could be closed due to a special event, were there days, like, this past year and last year, where there, you know, where the market was closed due to special events?
Yes, this year, the market was closed for a special event called Meat, well, bottom line was called Meet the Local Farmers. And they kicked the farmers that were on the market off their stalls, put them outside a fenced area, and then invited the other farmers to come forward. A little bit insulting, and the fact that we weren't invited to take part in it was even more concerning. And I don't mean to be disrespectful to the staff, it's just possibly an oversight.
I see, thank you. And my other question has to do with what our first speaker talked about, and that was where the vendors were told that there's going to be reduced space at Market Square because there's going to be furniture and whatnot. Can, can you tell me more about that meeting? Like, who invited, who held the meeting? And I believe no one from the city was at that meeting. Is that right, or what do you remember from that meeting?
That is correct. There was no city representative there, and we came by that information through a meeting that was held by the market vendors.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Son?
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. My question is, when the market closed for another event, or event such like Meet the Farmers event took place this year, I heard that you guys pay permit for the year. So, on such days, when you close your market, you get reduced fee for the permit, or no?
So, this year, we had to sign contracts, which we had no idea were coming, and in those contracts, there is no remuneration whatsoever if we're moved from our spaces. Now, that's also true with the lease. The lease, using 2006 again as an example, in 2006, we were given one week's notice on any event, sorry, any civic event that would take place. The new bylaw says we'll get four weeks' notice, and it could be any city special event. Well, that's great, we're getting a longer notice, but I don't care how long the notice is. I want to know how many times you're going to be kicking me out, well, excuse me, asking us to not be on the market. That's the key part of the whole phrase, not the advance notice. Although it is important, it is not the most important thing. So, I don't know if I've answered your question.
And if, may I ask you, that what kind of changes you like to see along with other vendors or your team? All the vendors have their businesses on the market. How you all think that it will be fair to include you guys when city staff or council makes such a decision, which has hurt your business, and how we can prevent that in the future, in your mind?
It would be nice if the vendors' association had their own committee set up so that the city could communicate with them. It would be nice if there was communication from city staff around any previous events, as they've said in, in the bylaw 2024, states that they will give us four weeks' notice. Doesn't necessarily mean that they'll be working with us to, to create a better atmosphere around the market. The vendors themselves have in the past worked with other organizations to provide service. We, in, I believe it was 2012, held a fundraiser for Doctors Without Borders, and the money that we raised put us in the top 10 of their funding for that particular year. So, there's a strong commitment to the community, not just by providing service and collecting money for the service we provide, but providing service within the community. Our firm in particular donates every year to Martha's Kitchen, and there are other vendors that do the same thing. So, there's a strong sense of, we want to be a part of the community, and we're willing to work with the community, but the city staff need to give us information so that we can work with them, and that's not occurring at the moment.
Thank you. Okay, there's no other questions? Thank you both very much. Oh, I'm sorry, councillor Beaum has a question. Sorry, folks, I'm just going to ask if you, gentlemen, if you could just say one more time, councillor Beaum also has a question? Go ahead, councillor Beaum.
Thank you, Worship, and through you. I guess, just simply, if there was three or four simple things that you could have from city staff to simplify this, what would they be, just so we can get them in bullet points, just so that we can have sort of the structure to continue this conversation at a higher level? What would be the top three asks of yours?
It's a difficult question off the top of my head to answer. The primary one, I think, would be to have the association create its own executive to speak with representatives from the city. But I'd also suggest that a committee be set up to meet three times a year, once in April, once at the 1st of July, and at the end of October, to discuss potential changes that are required for the market, or potential issues that are coming up for the market. And in that committee, I would recommend that there be representatives from the community and from the businesses that are surrounding the market, and city staff, as well as vendors. Would be the one that I could see would be the most useful, and I don't know if I could think of two others off the top of my head.
Fair enough. I just have one quick follow-up. So, recognizing that some, you know, closures may be, you know, necessary to provide access to just other events or something like that, what would be the maximum number, I believe, that you could sustain and still, you know, make your profit, come back to the market? Because in my mind, we want to support local food, and we want to support those vendors, but there are also some pressure points here. How do we offer that place to a few other people? So, what would be the, the magic number there? What would be the maximum you could handle for closures for a market?
Never on a Saturday. Never.
Ideally, never on a Saturday.
I just want to pay my mortgage.
The...
Good, good, it's good information, that's why I'm speaking.
Yep, so, between the months of May and October, we would prefer it not to be a Saturday. Tuesdays and Thursdays, we could negotiate around, no problem. After October 31st, it's possible to get a Saturday in there. But again, we've had this discussion with the committee that's set up to do film and movies, and we came to a negotiation with them on that. I don't know where that stands in terms of bylaw, and I have no idea where it stands within the city staff members, but it was worked out.
Okay, well, thank you for the information. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Imus?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, through you. I appreciate the comments that I'm hearing today, and I'm a huge, huge advocate and supporter of our farmers' markets. I think they're a huge staple in supporting a vibrant city. And I know that you have grave, grave concerns about a Saturday complete closure, and extract, different circumstances do present themselves to the city in opportunities, and like you said, film potentially is one of them, and recognizing what you just said, never shut down on a Saturday. However, if an, if an other area in a downtown location were provided to the market to be shifted on a Saturday, and I'm not saying on a regular basis, no, I'm not saying on a consistent basis, I'm just saying on a one-off basis, would the market be open to something like that?
To answer that question, I'd like to just give an example, if I could. On the market, if a vendor moves two spaces over, that vendor loses business. People don't find them that come to the market on a regular basis. To ask us to move the whole market to another area has been done. It was done the year that they decided to redo the Market Square. We were over there for, I believe, a year or maybe two years, and it took the better part of six months to get people to realize that it had actually been moved. And that's with advertising by the city and by the vendors' association to make that happen. I'd like to remind you, or bring forward the idea, that we have worked with movie companies in the past. They wanted to use the Market Square, and we agreed to work with them on that, and what they did is they used the Market Square primarily as a staging area. I would suggest that if they're going to use it for a staging area, that there's parking lots that they could use, and that the same parking lots that are being used by construction companies right now to build the downtown core. We are willing to negotiate with organizations, and we are willing to work with organizations to make it so that it works for everybody, and we've proven that time and time again.
And I, like I said, I get what you're saying, and I completely support you in what you're saying. I'm just exploring different opportunities.
Yep. Sorry, I'm emotional.
No, no, hey, I, if I was in your shoes, I would be as well. No worries there. I'm a huge advocate for the farmers' market. I'm just trying to figure out if there's another way where you don't shut down at all.
Okay.
I understand.
Thank you. I've just, just questions at this point. Councillor Stanny?
Thank you, and through you. I'm just more of a curiosity thing, because I'm more involved with the Memorial Center Farmers Market and how it works. Are you similar in a way where you're local farmers, and do you produce your own produce and food, or how does it work? What's like different?
The market has three, what are called resellers on it. The majority of farmers that are on there, myself included, make 100% or grow 100% of what they sell. So, there's a misconception among some people that the market has no growers, and that's not true. I don't know if that's answered your question or not.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Okay.
Okay, if there are no other questions, thank you both very much. Okay, thank you. So, continuing on, we have no further delegations this evening, so we will move to briefings. We have one briefing this evening. We will turn it over to Chief of Police, Scott Fraser, Scarlet Isles Director of Finance, Kingston Police, and Jared Sterns, Kingston Police Services Board Chair, to brief counsel on our information report number one with respect to the Kingston Police Services Board Quarterly Budget Status Report as of October 31st, 2023. So, folks, we can see you over there in the police boardroom. So, first of all, Chief Fraser, welcome. Congratulations on the appointment, and I will pass the floor over to you.
Thank you very much, Your Worship, and the whole team's here. You've received our report, and without further ado, I'm just going to have our finance director go right into it, Scarlet Isles. Thank you, Scarlet, for all your hard work on this as well, much appreciated.
Through you, Your Worship. This information report provides council with a financial status update of the operating budget for Kingston Police as at October 31st, 2023. With respect to the overall results, the total net cost of $37.1 million, or 83.7% of the annual budget of $44.4 million. Revenue and expenditures are tracking as expected, reflecting regular seasonal and other timing variances typically experienced year to year. However, as reported in last quarter's information report, the unbudgeted costs incurred to police post-secondary student mass gatherings put significant strain on the Kingston Police financial position. As noted in the report, total costs to police these events were approximately $577,000 as compared to $1.2 million incurred in 2022. Expenditures included $147,000 to police the St. Patrick's Day events, $61,000 of costs spent over move-in weekend and the weekends leading up to homecoming, and $355,000 incurred during the homecoming weekend. There was not a, thankfully, there was not a second homecoming weekend which helped keep these costs lower than the previous year. If not for these unbudgeted costs, staff would forecast a balanced operating position by year-end. Staff have implemented measures to reduce expenses where possible and utilize grants to offset other operating costs to help... and utilize grants to offset other operating costs to help limit the impact to the overall budget. Other notable revenue and expenditure variance are discussed throughout the report, of which I will now briefly speak. Provincial grant revenues are $2.1 million, or 95% of the annual provincial grants budget, resulting in a year-to-date surplus of approximately $253,000. This includes additional unbudgeted funding of $238,000 to support automated license plate recognition technology. Costs of $282,000 in the expenditure recovery account offset this funding. The remaining unfavorable balance in expenditure recovery reflects the timing of other budget recoveries for officer secondments. Criminal record check revenues are tracking lower than estimated, reflective of actual revenues realized over the past few years. Salaries, wages, and benefits are at $35.3 million, or 83.5% of the annual budget. Full-time wages are lower than budget due to staffing vacancies, turnover, and the timing of new hires. Kingston Police continue to experience challenges in recruiting for vacant positions. It should be noted that policing agencies across the country are experiencing these same recruitment challenges. Part-time wages are over budget, reflecting backfill requirements to cover staff vacancies. Overtime costs are exceeding budgeted projections. These costs are very dependent on the occurrence of major incidents. Major contributors to date include $346,000 of unbudgeted costs for policing the post-secondary mass gatherings, $78,000 attributed to the Collins Bay shooting incident, and $19,000 of overtime costs incurred responding to local rallies and protest tests that emerged with groups supporting respective sides of the ongoing Israeli Moss conflict in Gaza. WSIB premiums are seemingly over budgeted, as the budget for these member absences was primarily budgeted within the full-time wages account in 2023. Supplies and services are $6 million, or 85.53% of the annual budget. Uniforms and protective clothing are higher than projected and reflect increased costs due to inflation, supply chain issues, upgrades to safety elements, and new regulations. Education and training is tracking favorably, reflecting the elimination of the police college tuition. Utilities are underspent, resulting from lower-than-anticipated electricity rates combined with less consumption. The investigative services account includes $231,000 of unbudgeted costs to support policing the university districts. These costs primarily reflect bringing in reinforcements from other police agencies to provide additional staffing resources. For additional details, quarterly budget status reports are also provided to the Kingston Police Services Board and presented during the regular public meetings. Past reports are available on the Kingston Police Services Board website. Thank you for listening today, and we will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Counselor Rich.
Thank you, your worship, through you. I'm sorry, can you just please repeat that part about the WSIB variance, please?
Yes, I can. So on the WSIB line, it looks like it has been overspent. That's only reflective of the fact that some of the positions that are on leaves were budgeted up in the full-time wages account, so that would need to be offset against that count. So essentially, the budget in 2023 was understated, and as the budget, some of the budget was included in the full-time wages account.
Okay, thank you. And through you, your worship, just some additional questions. So looking at the overtime regular, I know that there's a bit of a breakdown there, that much of it was due to events in our community. So from quarter two to quarter three, there was approximately a $570,000 increase in overtime. Is that correct?
Yes, that would primarily be related to the overtime costs incurred during the last quarter, or the third quarter, as a result of the post-secondary mass gatherings.
Okay. And finally, one last question through you, your worship. With regards to expenditure recovery, there was $780,000 additional there in terms of revenue. Can you just please detail for me just very quickly what that was from?
Yes, I can. So this account actually includes a number of recoveries from provincial initiatives. So there are a number of officer positions, I think nine, that are being recovered through different programs. And maybe the chief would like to speak to this as well, if you want it?
Yeah, certainly. We have a number of seconded officers that are provincial joint forces, the Repeat Offender Parolee Enforcement. We have the Guns and Gangs Task Force Provincial Weapons Enforcement. We have the Strategy in relation to sex offenses against children. And we have, if I'm trying to think of the last couple, I might have missed one or two here. But certainly, there are officers who are seconded to provincial kind of joint force operations, which they pay us back and they compensate us for our officers' involvement.
Thank you.
Next is Tiffany Mary Glenn.
Thank you, and through you. Congratulations, Chief Fraser. Welcome. You've been hanging out with us for a while, but now you've got the official title, so. But my question's with regards to the budget. So I'm going to also take a bit of a congratulations on the fact that the unbudgeted amounts for the post-secondary events are down this year. But I'm, my question is, if we properly budget for these and we're not spending overtime money on it, can this not be decreased further?
Certainly a great question. You know, I guess at the end of the day, when we're going to provide safety and security for thousands of students, when we talk somewhere, depending what year, 4,000, 5,000, 7,000 students, there's an obligation for us to provide an adequate response to ensure the safety of people, the community, property. And further, there's also a requirement that we respond in a manner that is suitable for a mass gathering of that magnitude. So what we did this year, of course, was, you know, we look at the past few years, because the past is always a great predictor of the future. And we were able to work with our counterparts in crowd management with the Ontario Provincial Police. And we came up with a strategy for 2023, when we also initiated our liaison teams. We initiated an enforcement team, and we utilized those strategies to offset what we believed would be the major issues that we were going to see at our homecoming event. So utilizing all of those, then next year, we'll plan based on what we saw this year. And ultimately, our goal is that people come out, they're celebratory, they have a great time, and no one gets hurt, and that we limit as much as we can the impact on the community. So we need to ensure that we have an adequate response without being kind of an over, let's say, overpolicing the issue. So our whole goal is to reduce it, and we think that we've found a good pattern for the future, which would be liaison teams, communications with the university, and our post-secondary institutions, getting our people on the ground early, and certainly working our way to decreasing our footprint at the events. We just can't do it cold turkey, because, once again, we have that obligation to provide adequate and effective policing to it and to ensure that we're there in a presence that allows us to ensure the safety of officers as well. But that's our ultimate goal, is to work towards reducing this on a yearly basis.
Okay, great. I look forward to seeing what we accomplish next year, and thank you for working with the community partners to get such a much better outcome this year. My next question, though, has to do with the RIDE program. Now, RIDE programs, I would think, are something that we do regularly, and I note again that this was an overtime expense. Why was it an overtime expense, and can that not be, again, accomplished in regular budgeting and not have to be an overtime expense?
So this is a recover, this, for the RIDE program, we receive a recovery back to offset those overtime costs.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question is back to the claims. So there was a payroll benefit of $37,000. And is this due to a decrease in claims, lesser, less serious claims? What resulted in that? It looks good, but I'm just curious.
So these are related to health and dental premiums primarily. We budget based on what we think the premium's gonna be. And then at the end of the year, based on how, where we actually stand, sometimes we can receive a credit back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Eames.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, through you. Chief Fraser, I just have a couple of questions for you. In your assessment, how many officers are we currently short?
Certainly, right now, out of the workplace, we have 11. And then in the workplace, we have roughly the same amount in various capacities that we would consider, you know, accommodated positions. Some are temporary, some are a little longer. Rough, you know, depending on a day-to-day basis, that can change. For example, a maternity leave, for example, someone who's on maternity leave may be out of the workplace and return. And currently, our people who are out of the workplace on WSIB could return tomorrow, even though some of them have been away for a lengthy period of time. So we're just not, there's certain things we're aware of and certain things that we're not aware of. But certainly for us, with people in the workplace, there is a duty to accommodate, which we have a number there. So, you know, the number fluctuates, but right now, we're safely around that number, 11 out of the workplace and 11 being accommodated in the workplace.
Okay, so roughly 22 officers where Kingston Police Forces is short right now. I know there was a number that was proposed for new hires for this year, for 2023. Have all those positions been filled?
Yes, certainly. We didn't get as many seats as we wanted at the police college, but we certainly have been working towards that. We have, I know we were looking at the additional eight officers. So we did add that, but as I said, we have also had some people who've retired, and we've had some people who've moved on to different police services. So we have to juggle with that, so we won't see that increase of eight until we're able to rehire. But of course, the Ontario Police College has just changed their model, so they're putting through 500 to 550 recruits four times a year this year. But the allocations are made on the size of your community and the size of your police service. So, you know, for example, in the last intake, we wanted to, we were looking to get seven seats, and we got three, or we looked for five and we got three, and we've looked for seven and got four. We have four recruits currently just waiting to go to the police college. So it's an ever-evolving number, and it's, you know, on a day-to-day basis, it can change based on a number of factors.
Are you operationally compromised?
Not operationally compromised. No, we've done a lot of shuffling, where we've transferred people from different units to ensure that we can provide adequate and effective policing. You know, is it certainly, some days a challenge? We're just like every other police service now across Canada, battling against low recruiting numbers, the ability for officers to move department to department. And, you know, at the end of the day, what we do is ensure that we've got enough people to provide the service to the community. And I applaud all of our officers and our sworn staff in the supporting role for their ability to adapt. And it is, it's a tough time in policing.
Okay. Thank you, sir. You mentioned at the beginning of this year that when the budget was proposed, the community events that we've all been questioning you about were built outside of the budget. And I know that Counselor Glenn has now hinted that moving forward, it would be best that these events be built into the budget. I would strongly encourage you and your team to have that moving forward. And I understand the premise that you're short officers, and that is affecting a lot of the line items that we're seeing before us. But I think as, to get a true gauge of where your department is at, those items need to be built into the budget. And I know that you said looking at past history is a good indicator of building a future budget. Then I would encourage you to go down that road. And just a huge thanks to the police force, from my underst- when you're short 22 officers, that's a lot. So thanks to your team, and just a couple of words about working on the budget aspects. Thank you.
Thank you. And yes, the 2024 budget has it all built in. We presented that to our Police Services Board on Monday, and it'll be coming to you, and you'll see, we broke those numbers out so you can see them, but they are in the budget, so rest assured. We've learned, and we're going to move that forward.
Okay. If there are no other questions, oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Sun, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. First, I want to thank you, the team who prepared this budget is very, very well lined up. And it's a much better presentation than the previous one. My colleague has asked a very good question. There was a question I was going to ask. I'm just gonna ask a general question to the chief, that within this budget, what you're asking if city approved that budget, what kind of difference the citizen going to see in the terms of providing them a quality service, the service they deserve, the service they need? Thank you very much.
Yeah, certainly. Thank you. You know, earlier this year, the Police Services Board went through a lengthy process in developing a strategic plan. And in that strategic plan, were a number of initiatives. And what we built in this year are some of the initiatives that, first of all, we could fit in the budget. And with a strategic plan, of course, it doesn't, we can't do everything overnight. But certainly what our community will be looking forward to seeing, obviously, we need to, you know, improve our recruiting platform, improve the diversity of our police service in the community. So we've almost got the finishing touches on a new website and Join KP recruiting platform, where we're going to be working hard to get, you know, where all the police services are fighting for the same candidates. So we want to make Kingston the spot where people want to come and work. Wellness initiatives to keep our officers both physically and mentally healthy, keeping them on the road, keeping them at work, so they can be here to answer the call when it comes in. A number of initiatives that are going to be related to that. A number of human resource initiatives that we're putting forward that have not been introduced into the workplace at Kingston Police. So we're working on a number of those initiatives that we believe will improve morale, and once again, that all adds to wellness. And, you know, we have some new things that we have to include that are coming through in the new Police Service Act, which will be enacted April 1st, 2024. So we've had to improve some of the equipment, and we've had to make purchases of some of the equipment for 2024. We've got to do increased training with some of our officers. And, you know, we need to be able to ensure that we're here to meet the call, whatever it may be, and training is a big portion of that as well. So those are a few things that you'll see in the next budget. And, you know, I think they're all things that are gonna help the community and certainly help the police service move forward into the future.
Thank you, chief. My question was, the, I appreciate that your initiative for the police force and much benefit for the police force as well, they deserve it, they need it, to provide the good service. My question was for the, about the citizen. How are the citizen going to receive a quality service if this budget go through and we continue as a city council, providing the budget from the taxpayers' money? So they deserve better service. Any plan for the citizens?
Sorry, sorry. If I hear that correctly, then what would they expect? Like, you know, obviously, all of the things that I discussed would certainly, for the community, maybe you're gonna see like a decreased crime rate?
For the public, yes. I'm talking about the public. So how they will receive the difference between now and the previous services?
Okay, yeah. So certainly, obviously, some of the things that we've outlined, like improving, you know, increasing our clearance rates, so officers are better trained and equipped to make the proper investigative approach and clear those calls. We want to reduce crime, certainly the weighted crime in the downtown area. I know downtown wants to see an improved presence. We want to reduce number of assaults, for example, in the downtown area, so the public would get to see that. We need to make our roadways safer. And, you know, obviously, the community would see that. And those are, those are things that year over year, we continue to work with, but we've got certainly an enhanced approach this year with the strategic plan, strategic plan objectives and goals. And obviously, those are things that we're going to be pushing forward. And obviously, those are things that we're going to be pushing forward that the community would see. Those, those are kind of tangible things they'll see.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you all very much. And we will move on in our agenda. So we have no further briefings this evening. We will move on to petitions. We have a petition bearing approximately 79 signatures with respect to the need for a traffic calming measure at the intersection of Logan Street and Young Street, was submitted to the Clerk's Department on December 5th, 2023. Are there any other petitions to present? Okay, moving on, we have no special motions this evening, we have no deferred motions, so we will move on to reports. First up, we have report number five from the CAO.
Moved by Councillor Hassan, seconded by Councillor Amos, that report five from the CAO consent be received and adopted.
Okay, there are three clauses. Would anyone like any of them separated? Councillor Ridge would like clause one separated. Any other separations? Okay, so first, we will vote on clause two and clause three. Clause two is brownfield tax increment rebates for 700 Gartner's Road and 605 Princess Street. Clause three, parking bylaw amendments. All those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. So now circling back to clause one, class four noise area, 18 Queen Street and 282 Ontario Street. Councillor Ridge.
Thank you, Your Worship and through you. Just a few questions, because this is a very technical piece and affects some buildings in my district. So based on the report, the change in class is necessary due to the noise being approximately six decibels higher than what is permitted under class one regulations. So we'll put the average decibel reading at around 56, which is close to the limit for class four as well, right?
Mr. Park.
Thank you, and through you, Your Worship, that is correct, Councillor Ridge.
Okay, so, through you, Your Worship, will this sound be continuing all the time? Because if so, would it not then be in violation of the class four decibel limits at nighttime, which are 10 decibels lower than what they are during the day?
Thank you, and through you, Your Worship. The sound emission would be constant because it comes from the rooftop units located on the S and R building, abutting the development site. So these are things like air conditioners and chillers for the building. They may cut in and out during the course of the day or the evening, but there would always be a constant running of those. And of course, it would also be dependent upon with air conditioning, weather conditions, things like that.
And through you, Your Worship, what mitigation efforts are being, are being implemented or proposed to be implemented by the developer?
Thank you, and through you, Your Worship. Originally, it was hoped that mitigation measures could be implemented at the source, in other words, the S and R building. Unfortunately, the weight load that the mitigation measures were going to take, and the fact that this is a heritage building, it just was not going to be feasible. So then the developer had to look at being able to contain the noise mitigation within their own building. And to address that, they are ensuring all our units have doors and windows that can open, close, as well as air conditioning units, such that when the noise is being disturbing, residents can close their door and in warm weather can turn on air conditioning.
Thank you.
Okay, we will call the vote on clause one. All those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Okay, on to report number six from the CAO.
Moved by Councillor Glenn, seconded by Councillor Ossanik, that report six from the CAO recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
Okay, the first clause, naming rights for Kingston Large Venue Entertainment Centre. All those in favor? Opposed, and that is carried. Slush Puppy Place is official. Okay, we're good. Clause number two, Town and Gown Working Group Terms of Reference. For this, I will need two volunteers to be appointed to the working group. Do I have two volunteers? Deputy Mayor Glenn, Councillor Shinani, Councillor Ridge. Okay, we, we can, we can draw, we can draw names, so it's fine. Anyone who else who is interested? Okay, so we have three names. So Councillor Ridge, Councillor, no, Councillor Ridge, you're adjourned.
I withdraw, my.
Okay, you withdraw. Okay, so we have Deputy Mayor Glenn and Councillor Shinani. Okay, that's great. So, yes, so, so we'll just note that those two names have then have been inserted. Any discussion on the item? Deputy Mayor Glenn.
Thank you, and through you. I'd like to put on the floor a friendly amendment to this, that the name of the Town and Gown Working Group be changed to the Post-Secondary Working Group. There we are.
Okay, so, so we have a motion to amend, moved by Councillor Glenn, seconded by Councillor Amos. Okay, so we're just renaming it from Town and Gown Working Group to Post-Secondary Working Group. Deputy Mayor Glenn, you have the floor, if there's anything you want to say to the amendment?
Just very quickly, the intent was to name it the Post-Secondary Working Group to get a bit of a fresh start. We've talked town and gown relationships for a long time, so this, I think, gives it a bit of a different flavor. Additionally, town and gown is often associated just with the university. We're including both of the colleges here in the city, so I want this to definitely be inclusive. So that's the rationale behind changing the name, so I hope everybody will find that a friendly amendment and be willing to vote for it. Thank you.
Okay, any discussion on the amendment? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Okay, so we're back to clause two, as amended. Anybody else? Councillor Amos?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, and through you. Just one quick question. I've, I looked at the list of who is sitting on the committee, and my question to staff is, I know that my district and Councillor Glenn's district, and I believe Councillor Shinani's district have very active associations. And the question is, were the associations considered to be added to this list? And if I could just have a quick explanation?
Madam Clerk?
I see Holly Wilson also had her hand up there. Sorry, my computer screen was covering, and I didn't see Holly there, so I will defer to her.
Ms. Wilson, go ahead.
Thank you for the question and through you, Your Worship. I think at this stage, just the fact that we're getting this group up and running, we wanted to keep the membership fairly small and concise to encourage more dialogue and participation. This doesn't prevent associations from being involved in the work by any means, coming to the meetings and things like that. I can, as a next step of communication, we'll send out an email to associations to kind of explain the rationale mandate of the group, et cetera, as it go forward, and keep them posted on our communications meetings, et cetera, as we go forward with the group itself.
Excellent, thanks, Ms. Wilson.
Okay, we will call the vote on clause two as amended. All those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Okay, next, we actually have to deal with clause four, which is an item to amend clause three. So clause four on the addits is a recommendation that would delete and replace a clause in the third recommendation or the third clause of the report. So just want to make sure everyone follows that. So we will deal with clause four, minor amendments to Kingston Public Market Bylaw. All those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Okay, so now we can consider clause three, Kingston Public Market 2024 Operations, again with that amendment in discussion. Councillor Ridge.
Thank you, Your Worship and through you. On just a question from staff, there, there seems to be some confusion around what it is that council is voting on right now, based on some of the comments from the delegation. Are we voting on the potential proposed redesign of the market square space, as has been seen by the public previously?
CAO Hurdle.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So, thank you for the question, Councillor Ridge, you're correct, there is a lot of confusion. And what you are voting on is not a plan for furniture or anything like that. It's strictly the bylaw that existed in 2022 and 2021. And if you look at Schedule A of the bylaw, it provides the full market layout, and there is no reduction in any of the market stalls. They're all, they're all there, and once it's within a bylaw, then it becomes obviously something that city staff and all partners have to follow.
Councillor Ridge?
Thank you very much. And through you, Your Worship, will this bylaw provide the level of stability that's needed for the vendors as we move forward into the new year?
CAO Hurdle.
Thank you, and through you, thanks again for this question. As council is aware, loving spoonful with which we had an agreement in place did provide us with notice of intent to terminate their contract as of December 31st. This means that in the absence of any kind of operational bylaw, city staff have no way to implement any kind of rules to manage the operations of the bylaw or to work with vendors. We have no means to issue any license agreement and get the season ready for the spring. This is why it is time-sensitive, and it is a bylaw that went through a full public engagement. Actually, I think one of the earlier delegation mentioned that he was himself on a committee in 2021, which is the time we went through a full engagement process for this bylaw, and it was also presented at the Arts Recreation Community Policies Committee, and then went to council. So it did go through quite a lengthy process of engagement.
Okay, next is Deputy Mayor Glenn.
Thank you, and through you, I actually have an amendment to this. So if we could get that up? Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to amend, moved by Councillor Glenn, seconded by Councillor Osterhoff, that clause three be amended by adding the following words to the first resolved clause, as amended to insert the following into Exhibit B, Schedule C, under the heading Market Sales. Number two, stall holders, except for craft vendors, must post legible signage in the stall, which is displayed in a clear and unobstructed location, indicating where products are grown and produced to ensure that the public can make informed decisions about their food, and renumber the following paragraph accordingly. Councillor Glenn, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So again, I hope this is a friendly amendment. I did have a number of constituents reach out expressing how much they wanted to ensure that they were able to buy food locally. And if you went to the supermarket, you would be able to see where your food came from. So it's something that's becoming more and more important to people as we're moving towards a sustainable food system, hopefully, in our efforts here at council. This is one of the pieces of that puzzle, is making sure that we know where our food comes from. So this is simply to ask our vendors that are coming to market to indicate where the food is grown, and also as a bit of a celebration of where that food is coming from. I don't think we often realize the variety of growers that we have regionally, and I'd like to see that displayed. And my constituents would also like the opportunity to make those informed choices about what they're buying and where it's coming from. Thank you.
Okay, next is Councillor Tozo.
Thank you, Your Worship, through you. I just would like, I, I think that this is a good idea, but I'd like to get staff, have they done any engagement on this? I can't see farmers pushing back, but I do remember a delegation that said that we weren't, we were dictating too much from what the city was demanding. Can I just get a staff perspective on this amendment?
All right, Mr. Jashaden?
Your Worship, through, through you. We haven't done specific public engagement with the vendors, but as part of the work we're doing to prepare for the food strategy, we did ask residents what their interest was, and it is included in the report, and, and understanding where their food is coming from, and that notion of, of that belief of local sustainability, food security is a priority for them.
Excellent, well done. Okay, anybody else on the amendment? Councillor Osterhoff, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Patterson, I would just concur with Mr. Dejaden, that's exactly correct, sorry, thank you.
Okay, we'll call the vote on the amendment. All those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. We're back to the clause now as amended a second time. Deputy Mayor Glenn, you still have the floor, if there's anything else you wanted to say?
No, I'm good.
Okay, anybody else that wishes to speak? Okay, we will call the vote then on clause three as amended. All those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Okay, moving on to report number seven from Planning Committee.
Moved by Councillor Chaney, seconded by Councillor Glenn, that report number seven from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, there is just the one, sorry, two clauses. Unless anyone would like them separated, we'll deal with them together. So clause one, zoning bylaw amendment 1329, 1343, 1347, 1375, and 1383, Gartner's Road, and 561 MacRae Street. Number two, zoning bylaw amendment 769 King Street West. All those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Okay, on to report number eight from the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee.
Moved by Councillor Shea, seconded by Councillor Amos, that report eight from the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, there's just the one clause, approval of Kingston Music Strategy and Implementation Plan. All those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Okay. Moving right along, we have nothing from committee of the whole. Information reports, if you have any questions, just raise your hand as I read through them. Number one, Kingston Police Services Board Quarterly Operating Budget Status Report, as at October 31st, 2023. Number two, October 2023 Tender and Contract Awards Subject to Delegation of Authority. And number three, Emergency Management Programme Review 2023. We have no information reports from members of council. Miscellaneous business, we have no, no items there. We have no new motions. Are there any notices of motion? Okay, Madam Clerk, then I'll ask for minutes, please.
Moved by Councillor Stephen, seconded by Councillor Ridge, that the minutes of City Council Meeting 1-2024, held Tuesday, December 5th, 2023, be confirmed.
All those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Okay, we have some communications. Is there any other business? Councillor Sun.
Thank you, Your Worship, through you. It's a festivity season. I just want to wish my fellow Kingstonians, city staff, all the management staff, very happy, safe holidays, and a happy New Year. Wishing you and all of your family best of 2024, and I want to extend my gratitude for your kind and hard work, all of you, including the council members and the staff and the citizen, nonprofit organization, making our city a better place and inclusive for everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and certainly would echo those words, Councillor Sun. Also, just a reminder that this is our last meeting of 2023. Our first meeting of 2024, we will kick it off with our annual New Year's levy that will take place in Memorial Hall down at the other end of the building. We're inviting all citizens of resident of Kingston to come and to enjoy some, some time with us as we ring in the New Year together from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. That's on Tuesday, January the 9th. We're asking just everyone to bring a non-perishable food item for our participation food bank when you come. With that, if there's no other business, then Madam Clerk, ask for bylaws, please.
Okay, Councillor Amos is excusing himself because at the December 5th council meeting, he declared a pecuniary interest with respect to the fees and charges by law because of, he's a member of the Seniors Association, which rents space from the Kingston East Community Centre, and that bylaw is receiving its third reading now. So with that, moved by Councillor Osterhoff, seconded by Councillor McLaren, that bylaw 10 be given its third reading.
All those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried.
Councillor Amos, you can return. Moved by Councillor Osterhoff, seconded by Councillor McLaren, that bylaws 1 through 6, 8, 9, and 11, and 95 and 94 be given their first and second reading.
All those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried.
And finally, moved by Councillor Osterhoff, seconded by Councillor McLaren, that bylaws 8, 9, and 11, and 93, 95, and 94, excuse me, that bylaws 8, 9, and 11 through 93, 95, and 94 be given their third reading.
All those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Okay, I think that's the end of bylaws. Ask for a motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Councillor Tozo with the Santa hat, seconded by Councillor Stephen. All those in favor? Opposed, and we're adjourned. Merry Christmas, happy holidays, best for 2024.